All right, I'm gonna get started with the city council meeting for January ninth, two thousand and twenty-three. We are going to have our invocation by Sylvester Scott of Bahai of Temecula, and then I will do the flag salute. So would you please rise?
These servants are turning to thy kingdom and seeking thy grace and bounty. Oh God, make their hearts good and pure in order that they may become worthy of thy love. Purify and sanctify the spirits that the light of the sun of reality may shine upon them. Purify and sanctify the eyes that they may perceive thy light. Purify and sanctify the ears in order that they may hear the call of thy kingdom. Oh Lord, verily we are weak, but thou art mighty. Verily, we are poor, but thou art rich. We are seekers, and thou art the one sought. Oh Lord, have compassion upon us and forgive us. Bestow upon us such capacity and receptiveness that we may be worthy of thy favors and become attracted to thy kingdom, that we may drink deep of the water of life and be enkindled by the fire of thy love, and be resuscitated through the breaths of the Holy Spirit in this radiant century. Oh God, my God, cast upon us this gathering the glances of thy loving kindness. Keep safe each and all in thy custody and under thy protection. Send down upon these souls thy heavenly blessings. Immerse them in the ocean of thy mercy and quicken them through the breaths of the Holy Spirit. Oh Lord, bestow thy gracious aid and confirmation upon this just government. This country lieth beneath the sheltering shadow of thy protection, and this people is in thy service. Oh Lord, confer upon them thy heavenly bounty and render the outpourings of thy grace and favor copious and abundant. Serve this esteemed nation to be held in honor and enable it to be admitted into thy kingdom. Thou art the powerful, the omnipotent, the merciful, and thou art the generous, the beneficent, the Lord of grace abounding.
Would you please all join me in saluting the flag? Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Madam Secretary, could we please have the roll call?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Alexander here. Mayor Protem Kalfis.
Here.
Councilmember Schwenk.
Here.
Mayor Stewart.
Here. All right, so now we're gonna go on to presentations. We're gonna start off with the plaque for the outgoing mayor, and I would like to congratulate Mr. Schwenk for an outstanding year this year. It was fabulous. Thank you. (applause)
Yeah, thank you very much, Stu. I appreciate it, Mr. Mayor, and I just wanna take a brief moment to just say, you know, thank you to staff and my colleagues. There's no way that you can effectively do this job without the full support of everyone in this room and folks that aren't in this room, and I wanna thank my family for giving up a significant amount of time as they went back and looked at my calendar for two thousand and twenty-three and looked at all the meetings and just the public engagements and ribbon cuttings, and it's an exhausting year, and I'm happily over on this side right now looking in on you, Stu. So, all right, thank you so much.
All right, and then I believe you have a presentation.
Yeah, so at this time, I'd like to present this appreciation to you, Stu, for your TCSD president. This is actually your third year being TCSD president, so this is a plaque for your service for two thousand and twenty-three. We appreciate all the hard work and the dedication that you offer here for our community services. We know you're a huge community services guy, and we appreciate that a ton about you. So, thank you so much for your service.
All right, thank you.[332.22][332.22](applause) And anybody who knows me, I'm the fun guy, so I really do enjoy community services for that reason. We do have a lot of fun there, so, all right, so let's move on to the next presentation, which is years of service for the city of Temecula. We have Gary Adi for five years, we have Adam Ruiz for five years, we have James Richardson for ten, and Gary Watts for fifteen. So if you guys would meet me down there.[370.53][370.53](applause) So we will start off with Mr. Mr. Adi isn't here. So, Adam, here's your five-year pin. Thank you very much for your service.[396.28][396.28](applause) Mr. Richardson's, thank you for your fifteen years.
Ten.
Ten, okay. You're fifteen. All right, and Mr. Watts, thank you very much for your service.[411.12][411.12](applause) We can't do this without these commissions. These commissions are so important to the city council especially because they do a lot of legwork and a lot of investigation that we don't have to do. So, we're busy doing a lot of other things, so we rely heavily on our commissions. So, if you guys could turn around, because she wants a shot, let's scoot over. Yeah, you're awful big. Okay.[439.53][439.53](noise) All right, perfect. Thank you, guys.[442.53][442.53](applause) Let's, oh, did any of you wanna speak on? No? Okay, you're good? No speaky? Okay. The next presentation is who? Right there on our sheet.
Lynn Fanini.
Oh, yeah. Lynn, could we have the family of Lynn Fanini come up here?[467.22][467.22](applause) And Mayor Protem, would you read the certificate of remembrance?
Lynn Fanini, an honorable resident of the city of Temecula, passed away on November twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-three of cancer. Lynn Fanini was one of the first community services officers assigned to the city. He began his assignment as a community service officer, too, in the city of Temecula in July of nineteen eighty-nine until his retirement in March two thousand and nine. CSO Two Lynn Fanini worked very closely with many departments at City Hall and was regarded as a dear friend. He conducted all ABC training for the local businesses in the community, worked and organized all holiday events, conducted neighborhood watch meetings, approved building plans on behalf of the police department, took police reports, and trained other officers within the department. He was instrumental in the advocacy of public safety and opening of two police storefronts in Temecula. Prior to joining the Riverside County Sheriff's Department, Lynn actively served in the Navy for over twenty-one years. Within his military career, Lynn was assigned to the Commander Rapid Deployment Naval Forces, a special forces unit that deployed in a moment's notice anywhere in the world. His career in the Navy also included completion of a Westpac tour and several base assignments as a commanding officer. In addition to his Navy service, Lynn Fanini graduated from San Diego State University with his bachelor's degree in business administration, management, and operations. Lynn was a dedicated public servant and will be greatly missed. On behalf of the city of Temecula, Mayor Stewart presents this certificate of remembrance to the family of Lynn Fanini, and we wish them peace and serenity as they honor an incredible man.
So, people don't realize what a community service officer really does, and what he just listed off is kind of impressive, you know, how much they dedicate to the city of, especially Temecula. So we truly appreciate the service that your husband has, you know, given to our city. So, it's more than a certificate, it's an actual plaque. So, we hope you appreciate it and enjoy it.
He loved his job.
Yes, he loved his job. That's a great statement right there, so, I think she wants a photo, so everybody get as tight as we can.[606.58][606.58](noise)[607.58][607.58](applause)
welcome to at this time.
Thank you, Fanini family. We really appreciate you being here. Again, if there's any words of wisdom that you would like to share on behalf of former -- yes, please, come on up.
On behalf of my family, I just wanna say thank you to all of you for this recognition. My dad truly loved his job. He loved working with the people that he came into contact with. He loved representing the city of Temecula. He loved every aspect of his job, especially working with the Neighborhood Watch Program, being able to go into people's homes and help them to protect themselves, and just being able to share his knowledge. Thank you so much from our family. Mahalo Nui Loa from all of us to all of you. Thank you.
Thank you.[728.43][728.43](applause) All right, so we have a presentation by Ann Mayer, who is the Executive Director for Riverside County Transportation Commission regarding the Smart Freeway Project. So, welcome, Ann, and take her away.
Thank you very much. Again, I'm Ann Mayer, the Executive Director of the Riverside County Transportation Commission, and thank you for inviting us here this evening to speak about our I-15 Smart Freeway Pilot Project. Not only are we pleased to be here to talk about the project, I would also like to offer recognition to Temecula's representative at the RCTC, Mayor Stewart, so thank you for your service, as well as to thank all of the Temecula city staff for their close collaboration and partnership. I am joined today by a number of the RCTC team members, Erin Haake, David Knutson, Natalia Garcia, Area Alcantapia, John Terrassio, and Melissa Brady. So the RCTC team is here tonight to be able to talk about the project and answer any questions that you might have. So I'm not going to tell you anything you don't already know much better than I, but traffic delays are a daily problem on northbound Interstate fifteen, especially for commuters returning home to Riverside County during peak afternoon and evening hours. Can take forty-five minutes or longer to go simply eight miles with rear-end collisions being common. Air quality is compromised from vehicles remaining idle as they sit in traffic. Drivers get frustrated and clog city streets and neighborhoods looking for faster routes. I assure you, the increased traffic congestion here has not been ignored, and several years ago, with the leadership of then-mayor Matt Ron, the Move I-15 Task Force of elected officials along this corridor was created to focus on the congestion issues here in your community as well as those communities along the I-15 corridor. The project I am here to discuss this evening was an outcome of those coalition discussions. RCTC, working with our partners here at the city and with Caltrans, have developed an innovative, smart solution to help improve traffic operation, safety, and air quality. Our I-15 Smart Freeway Pilot Project in Temecula and Murrieta covers the eight-mile segment from the San Diego County line all the way up to the split, or the Y, and it includes the Temecula Parkway, Rancher California, and Winchester Road northbound on-ramps. So, everybody in the room except for maybe a couple of the Temecula staff members are saying, "What is a smart freeway?" Well, if you've been to Seattle, or Las Vegas, or Detroit, or maybe even Colorado, you might have seen more and more use of speed limit signs or informational signs along the freeways that are telling people in individual lanes how fast to drive, or what is up ahead of them, and so it's using sensors and technology and other features to continuously monitor in real time what's happening with traffic and use that information to relay it directly to drivers on the road so that they can make decisions about how they're driving and where they're driving. And we're planning on using technology here on I-15 in the same way. We will be using technology at ramp meters along the corridor that will create a coordinated system that allows vehicles to enter the highway at any given time. We will be using an adaptive system that keeps traffic flowing on the highway at a consistent rate. That is the goal. Time savings could vary along the corridor when we start implementing this technology, but the goal is to move traffic on the corridor more consistently, more reliably. Smart freeways is a non-told solution that we think will have benefits to all drivers. We're really encouraged by what we've seen here. We've got some statistics here from where it's been implemented, in Melbourne, Australia, where they have used this system on more than a hundred miles and a hundred and twenty ramp meters, where over the past decade, they've seen a forty-two percent travel time reduction during peak hours and a thirty percent reduction in collisions along what Australia calls its motorways. Now, you're all saying, "Well, why are we bringing what Australia is doing here to California?" And the answer is because we think we need to start using technology and new solutions to try to do as much as we can on the freeway corridors to remove some of the congestion that we're experiencing. The state of Colorado already has implemented a pilot program on I-25 in the Denver area. It was such a successful pilot program that they're going to be implementing this on a much broader basis throughout the interstates and highway systems in Colorado. Contra Costa County in northern California, east of San Francisco, is looking at developing a similar project, and Utah is also looking at a project now on Interstate fifteen. So this concept is now coming to the United States, and of course, we are going to be the first ones in California to give it a try. So now let's get into some specifics of what we're doing on I-15. So this is a graphic here that just shows some of the things that we'll be doing. We will have coordinated ramp meters at Temecula Parkway, Rancher California, and Winchester. And what I mean by coordinated ramp meters, you've all seen the ramp meters that are there now, where the light will go red or green and people get on, you know, get on the freeway one or two at a time. All of those ramp meters are separate. They don't talk to each other. This will coordinate all of the ramp meters along the corridor, so they're talking to each other to be releasing traffic in conjunction with each other. We'll also have vehicle detection devices on northbound I-15, so that's sensors that shown there, like, and as a blue line. Those are sensors and transmitter devices that will be down around four inches off the ground to be able to detect how many cars are on the freeway at any given time. I want to assure you, these sensors do not record or track license plates. There's no information that is reported, they're simply detecting the number of tires that go past those so we can know how many vehicles are on the corridor at a specific time. We all know as people are coming in from the inspection station and lots of traffic is coming north, and they're going as fast as they can until they slam into the congestion and start going in a stop-and-go manner. We will be putting up changeable advisory speed limit signs, a series of three of them, as people are heading north, advising people what speed we think they should be driving at. Again, the goal is to maintain smooth, consistent traffic flow through the area. Those signs with those advisory speed limits, those will not be regulatory signs, there won't be -- CHP will not be writing tickets on those signs. It's similar to what you see if you've been to Seattle, what you see there. It's simply advising people at what speed they should travel so that we can maintain free-flow traffic on the corridor. We'll have upgrades for ramp meters, various equipment. We will be widening some of the ramps, the on-ramps, so there's more pavement on those ramps to store vehicles on the ramp. I know how often those ramps can back up onto local streets, so the goal is to have the ramps have enough pavement so that cars are stored there as well. And finally, and very importantly, what we're doing here with these interchanges and these improvements is being done in coordination with the construction that's happening out at French Valley Parkway, so that when the French Valley Parkway opens and our project is completed, they will work together well. So what are the benefits? There's a variety of different benefits here. We're trying to improve traffic flow, decrease the rear-end collisions through fewer stops and starts, trying to save time for motorists, as well as provide other opportunities, and I think one of the biggest issues, and in the conversations we had here in these chambers on that Move I-15 Task Force, was that projects to widen freeways are incredibly expensive and difficult to fund, difficult to get through the environmental process, difficult to have under construction, and I think the French Valley Parkway, which has been underway for over twenty years, you know, to get us to this point with that project, is that projects are getting cost prohibitive to build, and so we're trying to find ways of being able to improve the operations on the system at the lowest possible cost, and this is the opportunity that we're being given with this project to give it a try. So what's a pilot project? We're gonna be doing this for the first time in the state of California. It hasn't been done before. We think it's going to work, and we think it's going to work well here on I-15 in Temecula. It has worked well in the United States, in Denver, we had both the Caltrans and RCTC teams, they're monitoring what was being done there, so we've learned lessons learned. We're looked at what's been done in Australia. We think there's an opportunity here to see if it will work, but it will take two years of being able to monitor what the results are to be able to determine, is this something that we can do here in California? So, starting in two thousand and twenty-five, the pilot period will run for two years, so it will be put into place a couple of months after the French Valley interchange opens. So we want the French Valley interchange to open, get operational, have people get used to it, and then we will turn this system on. We'll be monitoring what happens with traffic operations, we'll be monitoring what's happening with the ramp meters, we'll be adjusting the software so that in real time, we can try to make this system work as best as it possibly can. For transparency and for public availability of information, we'll be posting the data that we are collecting on a web-based dashboard, and we were also, as you can see here on the slide, we're gonna have evaluation criteria by which RCTC and Caltrans will be evaluating the before and after conditions. What were these conditions before we put this system in? What were some of the lessons learned during the pilot program? And then in the after condition, do we see that this is a tool that simply can be used throughout the state? For public outreach, obviously, there's gonna be interest in what we're doing when we're under construction, but there's really going to be a lot of interest in what we're going to be doing when this goes operational. So we've developed a comprehensive outreach approach with a digital focus to get the greatest reach to stakeholders as well as motorists. We'll be having, developing a virtual smart room that will be available 24/7. It will be an interactive smart room that will allow people to interact with the information that we have, and during, again, during the pilot period, we'll have a web-based system that will allow people to see in real time what the information is and how it is operating. As I've mentioned before, we're coordinating this closely with the French Valley Parkway opening so that we are in sync with that project. I do need to take a moment to commend the Temecula city staff for their persistent for decades on the French Valley Parkway project and the commitment of this council and previous councils in finding a way to get that project built. There's still another phase to go. This phase is going very, very well, and I just wanted to take a moment to commend the city staff under the leadership of Pat Thomas and the work that he's done. We've been really excited about the opportunity here to be able to use this system here. We not only have had Caltrans contribute one point two million dollars to our Smart Freeway Pilot Project. Congressman Calvert received an additional five million dollars in community project funding. RCTC is putting up the rest of the money, and this is about a twenty-one million dollar project in this corridor to try to see what we can do to improve traffic. So our anticipated schedule, so we are here, we are getting ready to put this out to bid to start the work actually in the field with the ramp improvements, as well as getting all of the infrastructure in place. We'll be under construction throughout the, throughout two thousand and twenty-four, and again, we are going to hold off on implementing any operations here until the French Valley Parkway project is finished, and I understand that right now it's on target in the two thousand and twenty-five timeframe. So, it's our timeline, we'll start the pilot project, then it will go on for two years. I have shared an awful lot of information. I'm sure you're going to have questions. I can anticipate what some of those questions might be, so I will stop now. Be happy to answer any questions you have.
So, do we have any questions from the council? Yeah.
Quick question, comment. So, thank you very much for the presentation, Ann. I serve on SCAG, and when this was presented to SCAG a few months ago, I was really excited about it. I was taking photographs and other, screenshotting it and going, "This is gonna be so great", and I think it is. I think the use of technology is important. We are in an age where we have access to a significant amount of technology, and we should be using it every step of the way. On the construction front, and I suspect that if there is construction in the lanes, that'll be nighttime work, or is that fair to say?
Certainly, sir. We will not be closing down mainline lanes in rush hour traffic. Most of the work that we would do that could affect mainline would be done at night.
Okay.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Yeah, absolutely.
Anything else? Nope. Well, I do appreciate your presentation, and, you know, it is one of those things that if you say it out loud, people are like, "What's that?" And so, and probably most people are still saying, "What's that?"
Probably.
So, yeah, until it's actually implemented and we see results, then it all kinda comes into focus.
It will, and I think what is interesting, it's a pilot program for a reason. We want to see if it will work here, and we think Temecula and I-15 is the perfect place to give it a try. I will say, there are other RCTC board members who have already raised their hand and said, "Us, too."
Right.
Probably in at least two or three other locations throughout the county, and the fact that RCTC is willing to put up this kind of money to test something out because we really can't build our way out of congestion.
Right.
Here in Riverside County, and using technology is the way of the future, and we need to see if this works. So I very much appreciate the willingness of the city of Temecula to be a partner here and to provide us with this opportunity to see if we can make a difference, so thank you very much.
Well, it's exciting for Temecula to be on the cutting edge.
Cutting edge. It's a great place to be.
Just like we are on a lot of stuff.
Yeah, thank you so much.
But we do stay right there, because we do have a presentation for you.
Oh.
Yes, and my--
Dun, dun, dun.
Mayor Protem is gonna--
Dun, dun, dun. Okay.
--read the certificate of recognition, and I'm gonna meet you down there.
Thank you.
Presented on behalf of the city of Temecula to Executive Director Ann Mayer. The city of Temecula congratulates Ann Mayer, Executive Director of the Riverside County Transportation Commission, RCTC, for her retirement after eighteen years of dedicated service to RCTC and for her contributions to the city of Temecula. For about forty years, Ann has combined her technical expertise as a registered civic engineer with public service in the inland empire transportation profession. Under Ann's leadership, substantial transportation projects have been completed, which have benefited the economy and the quality of life of residents in the city of Temecula. Ann and RCTC have been great partners with the city of Temecula in the funding and delivery of several massive transportation projects, some of which, the I-15, French Valley Parkway Phase One and Two, I-15 Congestion Relief and Auxiliary Lanes, Temecula Parkway and Ride Facility, Santa Gertruitas Creek Bicycle and Pedestrian Trail Interconnect, and many other projects in her tenure at RCTC. The city of Temecula congratulates Ann Mayer on her retirement and wishes her continued success in future endeavors.
Thank you very much.[1763.11][1763.11](applause)
Well, as you can tell-- Is it on? It is on. Okay, as you can tell, Ann has done a lot for the city of Temecula and came alongside us when we're hurting the worst. I mean, we have some of the worst traffic in southern California, and to have her advocate for us has been incredibly beneficial to us as a city, but you as citizens, so thank you again, Ann.
Thank you.
Here's your plaque.
Very much, thank you.
And photograph.
Did my team know about it? Did my team know about this?
No. Well, thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann.
All right. Now we are off to Board and Commissions Report.
And Mr. Mayor, I think if any other of the council members have any comments for Ms. Mayor, as well as Pat Thomas has some comments as well for Ann.
Well, I just wanted to take this opportunity to personally thank and congratulate Ann on her retirement, upcoming retirement, not quite there yet, but will be there soon. And I would say that, you know, over the last 30 years, as was read in the certificate, Ann has probably been, if not the most influential, I would say, one of the most influential transportation officials of Riverside County and responsible for really delivery of the significant infrastructure that has really made our ability to move from place to place in this county much better. And as you mentioned, there have been several projects here in Temecula that Ann and the Commission have been responsible for and great partners with the city. And then also, one of the other programs that the Commission, under Ann's direction, is responsible for is the Measure A, one-half cent sales tax program in Riverside County. And that actually funds a lot of our maintenance, our road maintenance and infrastructure maintenance programs here in the city as well. So not only the major, large transportation project, but also even the maintenance of our transportation and road systems here in Temecula. So I just wanted to thank Ann for her involvement in all of that, and again, congratulate you on your retirement.
And Mr. Mayor, as you know, our city manager is joining us via Zoom tonight. I believe he has some comments for Ann as well.
Thank you, Randy. And Ann, I'm sorry I couldn't be there in person, but I too just wanted to say thank you for your leadership. Thank you for being an amazing partner on this journey together, and we've accomplished a lot, and the mayor read it off earlier. But I just wanted to say thank you. You've been a tremendous asset to RCTC, but you've been a tremendous asset to the City of Temecula. So I wish you all the best in your retirement. Thank you, Ann.
All right. Then no other comments. We'll move on to our Board and Commission reports, which is Community Service Vice Chair, Ms. Hogs.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, staff, and members of the public. My name is Dr. Yuan Hogs. I'm the Vice Chair of this commission. Our chair couldn't make it tonight, so it's my honor to represent our commission tonight. We have five commissioners, Commissioner Ernie Castro, myself, Jeff Kingsburg, Gary Aldy, and Cassie Sizemore. As a commission, we serve to review and make recommendations on topics related to the parks and recreation element of the general plan and works to provide these services and programs for the community. Our last meeting was held last night. During the meeting, we received a presentation on special events regarding spring update. We approved the action minutes from our last December's meeting. During the meeting, we had our annual election, and Jeff Kingsburg was elected as Chair and myself was elected as Vice Chair. I'm very excited to serve in this new capacity. And our next meeting will be February 12, 2024, and I welcome you all to come to our meeting. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so let's move on to the Public Safety Report with our Police Chief, Mr. Durham.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, the city team, and members of the public. I hope you all had a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year's. I hope you're sticking with your New Year's resolutions. It's day nine. Don't give up.
Right.
Let me switch over. End of year totals. For the month of December, we handled 5,832 calls. So total calls year-to-date for 2023 was just under 75,000, calls for service in the City of Temecula. And a little bit of a change from 2022, the call volume dropped a little bit. There's no particular reason that I can attest to that. I wish I could tell you, but crime ebbs and flows at times. But we will remain diligent in doing our part to keep everyone safe. And if there's no further questions, that'll end my report.
Yeah, I do have some questions about the e-bike situation. We've gotten a lot of complaints from citizens who are dealing with, not necessarily e-bikes, but more like e-motocycles. So could you speak a little bit on the legalities of an e-motorcycle versus an e-bike?
Absolutely. I have a PowerPoint presentation for you.
Right.
So weird.
So weird.
So weird, but let's take a deep dive into e-bikes. What I'll present to you is covered in the California Vehicle Code, but they are pedal-driven bicycles with electronic motors under 750 watts. These things have popped up practically overnight, 900% increase in popularity since 2020. The biggest thing that I want to hit home tonight is that there are three types of e-bikes, Class 1, 2, and 3, and I'll explain those. All e-bikes come with a sticker on the frame stating their classification, so the parents at home won't be bamboozled by their children. E-bikes are considered bicycles, so you don't need a driver's license or a learning permit to operate one. But the big takeaway from this presentation is, is that in order to be an e-bike, it must have functional pedals. Next slide, please. So let's talk about a Class 1. They are low-speed pedal-assisted bicycles. As you pedal, an electronic motor assists you and provides you with a little bit of extra oomph up to 20 miles an hour. There are no age limits for a Class 1, but riders under the age of 16 must wear a helmet. Next slide, please. Class 2, same concept, but a little bit different. It's not pedal-assisted, it has a throttle like a motorcycle. It's also equipped with electric motor, top speed is 20 miles an hour. Again, there are no age limits for a Class 2, unless you're under the age of 16, you have to wear a helmet. Next slide, please. Class 3. This is a pedal-assisted bicycle with a little more power. As you're pedaling, it can propel you up to 28 miles an hour. This one, you have, the rider has to be over the age of 16, and regardless of age, you have to wear a helmet for a Class 3. Next slide, please. This is the one that 14-year-old Captain Durham would want, and this is the one that I'd be pushing my parents for, and this is the one that's getting people in trouble. There are many people in the community that enjoy bicycling. There are a lot of good bicyclists out there that are exercising, that are enjoying the beautiful bike lanes throughout the city. I want people to know that these are not legal. They're simply not. Even though younger me would want one, these are considered a motorcycle. This is a vehicle. They can go 40 to 60 miles an hour easy. Some even, as you do a little online researching, will even go 68, 75 miles an hour. These are treated no different than a Harley-Davidson, a Kawasaki. It has to have a license plate. The rider would have to be the age of 16 and older. They'd have to be licensed and insured. The consequences for riding one of these in the city is an impoundment of the motorcycle. So for the parents at home, if it doesn't have pedals and your kid wants it and it looks like a dirt bike, don't buy it. And they're not cheap. Save your money. Please, next slide, please. So what are we doing about it? The biggest thing right now is education, and we're starting in our schools. The school resource deputies are making their rounds. We're also working with the Temecula Unified School District. They have sent out an email explaining the rules of these e-bikes to the parents and are asking for the parents' cooperation in enforcing these rules with the kids. Additionally, I've instructed our motor deputies, when they see a kid or an adult on a, especially one of those e-motocycles, is to stop them, educate them. And we've been very successful with contacting parents and having parents come in a truck and pick it up and remove it. Because what I really want to avoid is, I want to avoid any type of fatalities. I want to avoid the pending traffic collision that's going to occur. I'm sure many people in this room have a story or have heard of a story or a near-call while they're driving and they see a kid, for lack of better terms, just driving really, really fast on one of these. The other thing is straight enforcement action. If I can't get through to you with a warning and with education, then we will impound your bike for 30 days. We will cite you. It's a misdemeanor. It'd be no different than driving with like an unlicensed motorist. And so that is what we're doing to help mitigate this problem, is predominantly education, warnings, but enforcement as well, starting with the schools. Like I said earlier, a majority of the people of Temecula are enjoying the bike lanes and are doing things appropriately. The complaints that I get are usually adolescent males doing what kids do on something that's way too powerful, and the consequence will be fatal if we don't, if we don't get this message out, we don't help ensure that they know the rules.
And I do want to reiterate too, all these e-bikes have to follow the rules of the road. They can't blow through stop signs. They can't act as though somehow the roads, rules of the roads don't apply to them.
That's correct.
And that's what we're seeing a lot of. So that's why I want to have an educational PSA out there to let people know, if they bought these bikes for their kids, A, if it's e-motorcycle, they better get their money back or sell it on the, you know, because it's going to end up costing them. Or B, if they're riding a pedal-assist, they need to follow the rules of the road. The kids need to know this because they're doing some crazy stuff out there on these bikes, and it's super, super dangerous. And not only dangerous for them, but dangerous for us because we go to try to avoid and we get in an accident. So it's very important for them to know that the rules of the road apply to them. And I think Council Member Schwenk has a comment, too.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Captain Durham, appreciate that distinction because when we talk about, you know, we'll hear like e-bikes, and it's sort of everything gets lumped into there. The electric motorcycles, much like the younger you would have wanted. I had one of those when I was a kid, and I lived in a rural part of, you know, San Diego County, and we rode those things off-road, off-highway. But what we're seeing is those things, they're being ridden on-street. But I also want to point out the fact that some of these folks riding these electric motorcycles are destroying our parks. They're messing up our sports fields. They're rutting out significant portions of soccer fields, and I have an issue with that. So I want to make sure that if you're a parent and you did buy this for your child and your kids are destroying our soccer fields, our baseball fields, our pump tracks, we will make sure that you find a way to pay for that. The public does not need to be paying for you destroying our soccer fields because you want to ride an electric motorcycle in our city. So I'm really happy with everything that's going on in the enforcement, and I really want to stay on top of this. So if this is something we need to agendize or kick to maybe Public Safety Subcommittee at some point, I'd be happy to do that. But thank you for everything you're doing so far.
You're very welcome, sir.
Chief, thank you again for that presentation because, again, I think all of us have had the questions of what is what and, you know, what an e-bike is in comparison to motorcycle. I think we've all, well, the dirt bikes, and we've seen all of them outside. So again, to reiterate what they've said, thank you on that. I do have two questions, though, that you kind of brought up in the presentation. Just so the public is aware as well, what are the age limits that the kids can be riding on the sidewalks with these things? Because I think that's a big thing. We have a lot of, you know, they're heading to school, and I live in an area right next to the middle school, and so I see them riding down the sidewalks. And so what is that age limit to where we should be moving our children or the residents into the bike lanes and have it be safe? I'm sorry if I, it was a big question.
No, 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 no. Sidewalks are generally designed for pedestrian traffic, but city ordinances do allow people to ride on bikes. If I remember correctly, the city council has allowed a city ordinance to allow in certain areas that are highly populated, like schools, shopping centers, to ride on the sidewalks.
Okay. And the other question I had for you as well, and thank you for that, is you had stated that you guys were reaching out to the schools. Have we reached out to also public schools like Lynnfield or Rancho or any of those as well to be able to connect with, you know, high-population children as well in some of those schools?
I don't know about Lynnfield, but I will inquire to make sure.
Or Rancho, or, and just any of the private schools or even the charter as well on some of those, so food for thought.
Yes.
So, but thank you for all you're doing. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
All right.
So I do want to make a recommendation to the city staff to actually kick this down to the Public Safety Traffic Commission and start looking into, first, just an informational campaign to let our citizens know this is what is expected and this is the issues we're dealing with. And so if you could direct the Public Safety Traffic Commission to actually kick this thing off and start it up and kind of look at the issues that we're dealing with, so... Mr. City Attorney, or City Manager.
It's fine, Mr. Mayor, we've taken copious notes, and the staff has been engaged in this process all along.
Yeah.
We're also glad about the comments regarding the damage to our properties and to our parks. That's something that we've been tracking in community services. Pat and his team are poised to kick this over to the Traffic Commission. That's something actually they've been looking at, but I think this is a little clearer in terms of the directive here, too. After we do that, and Pat, I know you have some thoughts, we'll circle back, obviously, with the city council, but it's all hands on deck here. So we're taking this very seriously. I know the city manager feels the same.
Okay.
Okay.
Perfect. Thank you. We're off to public comments on non-agendized items. Now, this is a total of 30 minutes, and it looks like we're gonna, we have more than 30 minutes worth. So if you, there's a clock right there in front of you. Please be mindful of that because people won't get to talk if you talk into their time. So we're going to be cutting you off pretty aggressively just to make sure we can get everybody in who wants to speak, so.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we do have several public comments. As you mentioned, it's a total of 30 minutes. Each speaker has three minutes. Please be mindful of the clock. It is in front of you on the podium. And at the conclusion of three minutes, I will let you know that your time is up and invite the next speaker up. So I'm trying to get to everybody. The first speaker is Daniel Molina, to be followed by Derek Davis.
Welcome, Daniel.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name's Daniel Molina. I'm a Temecula homeowner and resident, a United States Marine Corps veteran, a husband and a father of four. I attended the hospital Q and A a few weeks ago, and it was a failure on multiple levels. An executive even had to shout out, had to accept shouted answers from the crowd to make the claim that AMA against medical advice releases are rare. A study by the Harvard Review of Psychiatry reveals that up to 35% volunteer psychiatric inpatients are discharged AMA. These patients often are acutely ill and have severe symptoms at discharge. They also, as a group, have high rehospitalization rates and worse outcomes than patients who do not leave AMA. I know a local family who was faced with dealing with this issue. No facility throughout the state of California could take their child on because there would always come a time when the child would refuse any further treatment. They had to send their child to a state, out-of-state facility where the youth can't AMA without parental consent. I am in support of mental health. What I am against is the history of failure that this UHS facility has presented us. This was also pitched as a facility that would benefit veterans, but this is not a VA facility. The only veterans this place will serve are those of us who have insurance. I don't have to remind anyone who the newly insured demographic in California is, but it's not military veterans. Most veterans who really need help don't have coverage outside of the VA. So any attempt to push this facility with the troubled veteran demographic is deeply offensive and a complete misrepresentation of what they're saying. We don't have to come up with a reason to say no. In fact... In fact, they were supposed to present a reason for us to say yes. That was what the Q and A was fail, was for and they failed. It would be more beneficial to our county if UHS would be, choose a more central location for their facility, a location that won't be in the middle of residential community and right in between schools. I've also heard things like the hospital's coming regardless. And this seems to be nothing but the echoes of corporate corruption. Can anyone explain to us how this is such a sure thing before the city council casts its vote? Our community is not for sale and we should not stand idle while some outside agency tries to bully their way through our process. UHS has no authority in the city of Temecula. If this facility is built here, homelessness and drug addiction issues will grow new roots here. This is not NIMBY, not in my backyard. This is more like Tab-O, there are better options. We cannot ignore the communal risk just to accommodate the demands of a corporate executive looking to line their pockets. I look forward to following the situation and I hope you vote in the favor of your constituents and not UHS. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Molina. The next speaker is Derek Davis. Derek Davis to be followed by Yolanda.
Of course, after Danny, huh? So good evening, City Council. My name is Derek Davis. I've been a resident here at Temecula for the past twenty-two years. I feel it is my duty as a citizen to make my voice heard and offer my opinion on topics being discussed for the future of Temecula. Recently was brought to my attention about the new behavioral health facility that the hospital wants to build right next to Rancho Christian School. This is close to home for me because since age nineteen, I have struggled with mental health myself. I've been on both sides of the coin. At one time, I was a patient in a lot of these facilities. So after years of hard work, I began working as a counselor and a clinical operations for multiple rehabs in Temecula. And I recognize that this is not being sold as a, as a drug abuse center, but, and I do also recognize that we do have a huge mental health crisis. To be honest, it could possibly trace back to the prescription of OxyContin by doctors claiming that they believed it was not addictive. I fell victim to that lie and it took away pretty much all of my twenties. I can only imagine how hard it is for children these days with social media, the culture, drugs, alcohol, and the stress of finances. After attending, and after attending the Q and A offered by the hospital and UHS a few weeks ago, I was extremely concerned with their answers they had gave to the public. First, they made us write our questions down and only answer the ones I guess they felt were relevant. I thought we were supposed to be transparent and open to discussions. Secondly, the way they laughed off some of the questions about fifty-one fifty patients and whether or not they would be offering gender-affirming care, I felt was a bit dismissive and condescending. The truth of the matter is offering a hundred and twenty-bed facility for anxiety and depression while not addressing drugs and alcohol, which we all know is a huge factor, is disingenuous. From my experience working at inpatient and outpatient drug rehabs, and like I said, I recognize this isn't being sold as the drug rehab, counselors and therapists do help reduce anxiety and depression. The core problem of all facilities has always been the insurance companies, to be honest. They dictate whether or not the patient stays in the facility or not. I can't tell you how many times we had to release patients that all therapists and counselors felt was not ready to leave, but we had to due to the insurance not covering the days necessary. Not to mention the patients that choose the AMA, which has checked themselves out of the facility against medical advice. I recognize that this is a low occurrence in hospital settings, but in mental health and drug rehabs, the stats are between six and thirty-five percent. And since this facility is going to be open to all of Riverside, not just Temecula, I'm very concerned at how this could change the demographics of the city. Me just doing the math, let's just say a hundred people, ten percent AMA, along with the average stay being five to seven days, the city could possibly be looking at twenty to thirty new homeless people.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. That is time. Appreciate your comments. Next speaker is Yolanda.
My name is Yolanda. I've lived in this community since nineteen eighty-five. I'm a mental health worker, the wife of a first responder and a Los Ranchitos homeowner. I attended the informational meeting on November thirteenth regarding the new proposed behavioral health hospital. The meeting was very disingenuous with Brian Visser, COO, and Darlene Wetton, CEO, controlling the narrative of the conversation with their note cards, which they chose to either read or toss if the question was not following their narrative. At this meeting, lies were told to the community. I don't have enough time on the clock to stand here and tell you every single lie, but I'll go over a few of the lies. Lie number one, the hospital won't profit money. I find this hard to believe considering TVH Hospital is operated under Universal Health Services, which is a Fortune 500 company out of Pennsylvania. Lie number two, police drop-offs will not be accepted at the new behavioral health facility. However, what was failed to be mentioned was that fifty-one fifty police drop-offs are accepted at the hospital emergency room where law enforcement is required to take fifty-one fifties, which would subsequently be transferred to the behavioral health facility by referral. Lie number three, only people with medical insurance will be accepted at the new facility. No uninsured homeless or no uninsured illegal aliens. However, what was failed to be mentioned was that in twenty twenty-four, the state will be expanding its Med-Cal program to include more than seven hundred thousand undocumented Californians. Then there was the condescending woman in the red dress, Dr. Johnson Quijada. She did more to hurt the hospital than to help them. She was observed laughing at some of the questions and concerns community members were voicing. Mr. Brian Vessar, COO, who sits on our Los Ranchitos HOA board meetings, will tell community members that another UHS hospital by the name of Canyon Ridge Hospital has been success, successful in the community of Chino. However, upon further review, this hospital is nowhere near schools or residential neighborhoods like the new proposed facility. Recently, a one hundred and seventy-seven million dollar settlement was resolved in a lawsuit against UHS for improper admissions and extended stays. Their behavioral health facilities were maximizing payments by admitting as many patients as possible and keeping them as long as possible. This is not about community members not caring about mental health. As a psychologist, I support mental health. It's about the safety concerns this behavioral mental health hospital will bring to Temecula and the neighborhoods closest to the hospital, including the two surrounding schools, Sparkman Alternative Education Campus and Rancho Christian. Why should Temecula bear the responsibility of this proposed hospital while they profit at the hands of our community? Mayor Stu and council members, I urge you to research the statistics regarding hospitals in and around the residential.
Thank you, Yolanda. That's the end of your time. We appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Denise Wilson. Denise Wilson. And following Denise Wilson is Payam Dineshwar.
So first of all, good evening, Mayor, city council members, staff and guests. And I am so honored to be here to speak on some good things that are happening in our city, especially with the support of Temecula Valley Hospital, who I truly love dearly for all the work that they do. But on to more important things. I want to speak to you about our nonprofit that I started about eight years ago is heart and stroke disease. Next month is actually Heart Awareness Month and we're holding our annual Rock Your Red for heart and stroke awareness. We know that stroke and heart disease in, is the number one and the number three killer and it actually kills more American than all forms of cancer. So what we do is we have an event at Pachanga and we have Dr. Ho and we have the cardiac stroke team from the Temecula Valley Hospital speak. We also have the American Heart Association speak and we just have a fun event. This is educating you on how to live a healthier life, free of cardiovascular disease. So we're asking you to come out on Friday, February the twenty-third and have a great time learning how to live healthy life in our community, what to eat and what not to eat and how to exercise and live a full life so that you can be a blessing to someone else. So come out and check us out. And that completes my report.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. The next speaker is Payam Dineshwar to be followed by Scott Duncan.
Sorry, just one second. Can I start now?
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Appreciate everyone's time here. Just wanted to get through a few things. I'll start out with.
Please step in front of the mic.
Yeah, sure. Thank you for your time. I just want to talk about a few things. One is item, the second thing I want to talk about is the coyotes. I see a lot of coyotes here and I think it's, they're treated very badly. I saw online, it's just, it's okay to kill them if they're on your property. That's, I think it's, a lot of people need to take better care of their property and we took land from the animals. We never took land from people. No human ever took land from human because of ancient civilization. So I have an idea for the coyotes. We can, we should try to have experts use ketamine guns, trap them and release them in some rural area in the desert. That'd be great. We do not, we're not dog cat killing China. We shouldn't learn from them. And that's one thing. The third thing I want to talk about, Temecula is wine country. There's zero, there's absolutely zero positive, there's zero therapeutic use of alcohol, there's zero therapeutic use of cannabis and uppers and downers, but psychedelics help a lot. And the side effects of psilocybin is positive mood, just self-acceptance, self-love, self-gratitude. I think it'd be great if you please allow this, because they're already in LA and San Diego, if you can maybe talk about it and one day allow Temecula to have that. It's great for mental health for those who are, and the medications enter depressants, I call them murder-suicide pills because they have a lot of side effects and anyways, I'll, I'll move on to the most, most important topic. I'm gonna run out of time, is the smart city agenda. So the RCT Smart Freeway Pilot Program, okay, Melbourne, Australia, let's talk about that. They had, they were the most tyrannical place ever. They allowed you to not escape a five-kilometer radius unless, or you'd be punished or you'd be fined. You had to register online for two, for only twice and you had to pay. Now, the smart cities, I call them stupid cities. Anything you put smart in front of it for technology is pretty stupid unless it's used for medical purposes. Other than that, it's tyrannical. I mean, it's, these fifteen-minute cities are a digital prison. And I'm worried about the, the carbon nitrogen taxing, the ESG score, the social credit score, and this is gonna in fact, impact our CBDC. This is all from the Green New scam. What you want to do is you want to make sure China, India, Mexico stop looting. You want to make sure that, you tell the sun to calm down on the solar fields, tell the earth magnetic field shifted faster and tell CERN and HARP to stop messing up our weather. Other than that, my seven-second rant is Infowars.com, listen to Bannon's show and vote for Trump.
Thank you, Mr. Dineshwar. Your time is up. And the next speaker is Scott Duncan.
Good evening, Mr. Duncan. Yeah, good evening, Mayor Stewart. Thank you, folks, for all you do. Temecula is a wonderful place to live. My wife and I have lived here for twenty-three years. I got here, we came here with our kids at the midpoint of my career as a Marine Corps officer and we love this place. We chose Temecula probably for the very same reasons most of you have and the folks that are here tonight. Great schools, wonderful place to raise kids, it's a safe place to live. Housing costs have certainly gone up, but when we moved here in two thousand and one, it was very affordable compared to other options throughout the area here. And it's pretty darn close to Camp Pendleton and a little bit of a drive to Miramar. And as we saw the brief earlier, coming back from Miramar, it's very, you know, it's kind of a tough drive. It could be two hours. But I want to get back to the issue of safety. Now, a couple of folks have already spoken about the fifty-one fifty drop-offs for folks that have psychiatric, psychiatric issues. And certainly that's, that's an important thing because we all have family members, I would imagine. I know in my family, in my wife's family, we have folks that have needed help. In fact, my brother-in-law committed suicide. He needed help. So we have to have a heart for that. But we also have to remember that Temecula is a bedroom community, right? It's not a big city. And we want to retain what we have here and attract families to come here because it's all about families. That's why we came here. I came here as a Marine, but we loved it and we retired and we stayed here. I retired in two thousand and twelve and at some point we moved out to wine country. So we're in the unincorporated portion of Temecula, but our heart is still here. Our kids played soccer. They went to school here. They have good friends. They went to college here in California. And at some point, we hope that they come back here to the community. But if we're not smart about how we're looking at the issue of having all these folks come here that need help, the other gentleman mentioned that, you know, thirty-five percent of these folks, and I've seen statistics too, may remain in the area. How are we gonna handle that? What facilities, who's gonna be responsible for, you know, making sure these folks are taken care of? I, I don't know the answer to that and I'm sure you folks are thinking about it. A safe place is important to raise your family. Temecula is a great place. Let's please consider that and let's maintain our good reputation here as good people and a safe place to live. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Duncan. The next speaker is Jeanette Bassi. Jeanette Bassi to be followed by Melissa Bourbonnet.
Good evening. My name is Jeanette Marie Bassi and I have been a resident of Temecula for thirty-two years. I attended the orientation presented by the Temecula Valley Hospital and had several concerns. They never directly answered the question of fifty-one fifties, danger to South and others, if they would be admitted to the proposed facility. Even though several of us asked numerous times, they continually pressed the answer, they would not answer and they became defensive. The CEO also said the proposed behavioral service facility would not receive any funds to run on the, or develop the facility. They presented it like it was a nonprofit by saying they will not make money and they were only doing it for the community. Anyone who's ever run a business knows the difference between a nonprofit and for-profit business. For-profits don't stay in business by losing money. They also said no person would just leave the facility out into the streets, the residential streets, because there was a plan of transportation. You can't prevent a patient from walking out of facility and out to the residential streets regardless of the transportation plan you have. When pressed with this information, Temecula Hospital also skirted this issue. If the facility in the future does house fifty-one fifties, they can only hold them for forty-eight hours and they can walk out into our streets. They can't be forced to take the transportation plan. They stated no alcohol rehab, drug abuse, or severe mental patients would be admitted to the new facility. They said their admitting criteria does not include this. Maybe that was true at the time because it wasn't part of Behavioral Health Services for the two thousand and four bill, but Governor Newsom just signed the Behavioral Health Services Act, Senate Bill three-two-six and Assembly Bill five-three-one. Senate Bill three-two-six reform expands services to the treatments for those with substance abuse disorders, prioritizes care for those with very serious mental illnesses and provides ongoing resources for housing. Assembly Bill five-three-one includes six-point-eight billion dollars general obligation bond to build eleven thousand one hundred and fifty treatment centers, supportive housing units, as well as outpatient capacity for thousands of individuals. These bills will be on the two thousand twenty-four ballot as Proposition One. If this proposition passes, and I believe it probably will, the criteria for admitting to behavioral health hospital changes to include severely mental ill and substance abuse. Have any of you ever worked in a mental health facility? I have and it can be very dangerous. Having been a therapist who worked with severely ill patients, I believe that a building mental health facilities is very important and I encourage that, but the location is just as critical. You do not put it in a residential neighborhood with children's schools nearby. And lastly, where is the environmental report? There was a lust leaking underground storage tank from the leak caused by the Shell Station at Margarita and Temecula Parkway. The fume went into the aqua floor and under proposed building site. What is the status of this cleanup?
Thank you, Ms. Bassi. Your time is up. We appreciate your comments. The next speaker is Melissa Bourbonnet.
I just asked you to really seriously look at the location.
Thank you. The next speaker is Melissa Bourbonnet.
Okay. Hello, good evening. I am Melissa Bourbonnet and I am here on behalf of Upward Community. And as you know, at this point, we are a voice for the local And as you know, at this point, we are a voice for the local workforce. I am here to provide some feedback to the comments that was made on December 12, 2023, in specific by Councilmember, now Mayor Stewart, and also Councilmember Alexander. Mayor Stewart, on December 12, 2023, one of the things that she wanted to clarify after Laurel and I had spoke was that, I quote, "Our city council has always made it a priority to provide affordable housing for our workforce," okay, unquote. I appreciate the sentiment, and I believe it's heartfelt. I do. You're one of the council members or mayor at this point that Laurel and I really respect and admire. So I'm going to give you the benefit of the doubt that you meant it, and it was heartfelt. But I'm also going to challenge you on some of the comments that you made. For instance, you gave as your example 804 units. Currently, Temecula has 804 affordable housing units. I'm not sure if you're aware of this, but there are 54,000... This is stats that I have from Aaron Adams' office. 54,000 residents in Temecula that live here and are employed. Now, we don't know if they live and work here. I think it's safe to assume that they don't, all 54,000, live and work here. But they work here and they're employed. They might be 16 years old, but they are employed. And more specifically, they are part of your constituency because they are Temecula residents. Out of those 54,000, there is a slight breakdown... A slight breakdown, a general breakdown to include... 16% of them are blue collar. We don't know. I spoke with the assistant, Aaron Adams' assistant. We don't have that information as far as what that individual income looks like for blue collar. But blue collar nonetheless, 16% are blue collar, 65% are white collar, 18% are service and farm. So if you want to take white collar out of the equation, most of us know that white collar usually earns more, then we have 18,727... 18,727 people that have jobs here that are classified as blue collar or service and farm. Do you know what that looks like, those 18,000 people? What does their budget look like? How much money are they spending on housing? Is it half their income? How many hours a day are they spending on the road? Where are their children when they're on the road? What's their mental health look like? We've talked about mental health tonight. Guess what? When you don't have to spend two hours on the freeway every single day, that's good for your mental health. Guess what? When you can leave work and you're home after 10 minutes or you can walk through the park because you're not on the freeway for an hour, that's good for mental health. To be continued.
Thank you, Melissa. The next speaker is Laurel Lamott, to be followed by Darrell Terrell.
Okay, so Jessica went to town after I left. Sorry, don't hang out for all of the meetings because I work full-time and I'm a single mom. All right. According to Jessica, I'm distasteful and I lack class and tact. Put on a blazer today, you know, class it up. She also accused me of attacking the council and city staff. I have never attacked the council or city staff. Comprehension is not just critical, but should be required in representation. I don't think that you, Jessica, understood what you were saying or understood anything that I've brought to the table or what the responsibilities of the city are. People don't have houses and places to stay. Maybe you missed the part where I said my brother died, a homeless person. I've been here. I was here before he died. I'm still here after he's dead. I'm not asking for houses inside parks. We are talking about attainable homeownership and stopping the segregation of the affordable housing in Temecula because all the attainable homeownership is shoved to the other side of the freeway, an unaffordable overlay zone, not included in your pre-planned communities. That is a city decision. That is a city design. That is city control. Planning, that is your responsibility. That is your job. I have never asked the city or city staff for anything for me. I come here and advocate for a workforce. The city has never done anything for me. I am asking the city to do its job. Do you know what the city's job is? It's part of your job to know. You need to know what attack means. You need to know what the words mean that leave your mouth. I have never asked for help. I'm asking for you to understand your job and your responsibilities and the responsibilities of your staff and what they can and cannot do, Luke. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lamott. The next speaker is Darrell Terrell, to be followed by Cory Robinson.
Hi, my name is Darrell Terrell. Happy New Year, Mr. Mayor, your esteemed city council. I'm a planning commissioner in the city of Reno Valley, but I'm speaking on behalf of myself and a neighbor for you. I'm here to talk about catalytic converters theft. And what we can do to close the dragnet on these thieves together as a united county and hold them accountable. While there has been considerable legislative attempts in Sacramento to crack down on catalytic converter theft, our county and cities throughout our county, including Riverside County, Norco, Beaumont, Corona, Palm Springs, Eastville, Cathedral City, Desert Hot Springs, and as I said, our, my city of Reno Valley has passed an ordinance to assist our deputies in holding these thieves accountable for their crimes. And I'm here to ask you to join our crusade to put a dragnet on these crooks. If we close the dragnet, these folks will go somewhere else instead of going to a neighbor in town. And the thing also too to remember too, there was a recent state law, it was AB 641, that says you only can have six catalytic converters before they can do anything. That's... Make sense of that. You only need one to cause financial disaster to your family. How are you going to get to work? How are you going to pick up your child? How are you going to do to see your loved one if they're in the hospital? And so what I brought you here today is this ordinance from the county which they passed. And I went before the county and to my own city first to tell them we need to do something about it. I presented an ordinance to them. I said, "They didn't take a look at it." But I went to the county with Kevin Jefferson Supervisor Gutierrez, and they took upon it and they passed it. And what I'm asking every city in this county is we need to hold these people accountable. We cannot depend on Sacramento to do the job. They got it wrong again. Six catalytic converters before... Unless you have an automotive dismantler. What kind of sense is that? If they have one, that gives the police accountability, the ability to get these folks in probable cause. And another thing too is important. You guys contract, like we do from Reno Valley Riverside Sheriff's. They're already doing it in incorporated areas. All we have to do is adopt it and they can just turn their duties into the city. It's simple. But one thing we got to do, we got to hold these crooks accountable. And that's why I came way down here to tell you this because we need to do it as a region. So anyway, I want to place this in the... I hope you guys consider this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Terrell. The next speaker is Cory Robinson, to be followed by our last speaker, Jessica Christopher.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for keeping the community safe, sir. And to all the people on the board here, the city council, thank you for your service. I am Cory Robinson, a little veteran that has settled in this community. I work at Trader Joe's and one of those local people was looking for housing. And I didn't qualify for the affordable housing next to the riverbed. And because they said I make too much money and I don't make enough money to buy a home here. So that's my argument. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. And our last speaker is Jessica Christopher.
Hello, Jessica.
Hello. Did you miss me?
Yes.
liar. Okay, I'm here tonight to thank council members Alexander and Calphus for helping me get a city representative to the homeowners, Concerned Homeowners Meeting in Meadowview regarding the water credits. I do... Excuse me. I do also know that a member of the Meadowview community has reported to code enforcement a pond that was created by one of our HOA board members and moved dirt in a stream bed without a permit. I addressed this to one of our other board members, and she has indicated that the HOA board was working with the city to resolve this... Sorry. To resolve this issue. Sorry. The concerned homeowners who understand the seriousness, the lack of the permit in the stream bed would like the city's support to help us remove the HOA board member who has...
Yes, Christopher.
Thank you. Not like getting up here is fun for me, but then I have to cough while I do it. The HOA board member from the board who should know better, given she also serves on Team RCD. These are California state and may also be federal laws that she has broken. We do appreciate your support.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, that was the last comment under non-agendized items.
All right, so we'll go on to the consent calendar. So...
Mr. Mayor, we actually have city council reports next.
Oh, got it. Okay, that's right. I'm getting anxious. All right, so... Oh, there it is. Okay, so do we have a city council report? So let's start with you.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Okay, we'll start with the wreaths. All right, well, I just want to first off just thank and it was thank the public cemetery here in Temecula for allowing me to speak and honoring me to speak over at this event that ended up occurring on December 16. If nobody has ever been, it's absolutely beautiful. It is called the Wreaths Across America. We have now just recently, or our cemetery individuals and staff over there have just recently been participating in this across America, and it was absolutely beautiful. It's a way to honor our veterans and the individuals who have courageously fought for our freedoms. And so right before Christmas time at this... As on the same day, everybody across America reads the same speech over, I guess, the, you know, the cemetery. And the individuals all that participate get to lay wreaths at every one of the headstones at the cemetery. And this was a real blessing because we had, I think, about 335, somewhere around there, veterans here that were buried here who were honored. So I just want to just thank them for all that they do here and allowing me to participate in such a wonderful event. So if I can do the next one, please, as well? Okay, so I just want to give a little update. I've received an email from one of my constituents in District 2. I'm sure most of us here... I know I see a couple of familiar faces from the Los Ranchitos area. And I know a lot of us have probably driven by the roundabout and end up seeing the horse missing. So I just kind of, especially because it's in my district, I just wanted to give a little bit of update as to what the city's been doing here as a majority of it. I'm going to go through just briefly some of it. But I just want to thank city staff and also the Los Ranchitos Homeowners Association for working together to try to allow the situation to just prosper in a sense that there will be more safety and that we will end up having a beautified area as well. So just to let some of you know, after the last accident that went and killed the horse, I would say, and drove him over, we got it fixed, so our staff did. So they got that fixed. We just haven't put it up yet because they haven't finalized what they want to do in the area. They have installed barricades, and they may not be the prettiest right now, but the nice thing is is they're working. There hasn't been an accident right now. Most you see that fence that breaks down all the time, and it's been working. So not... They're not permanent, but let's just hold them there until the situation finalizes. Let me see. We've also been doing striping for the bike lanes, which we call the road diet, which is going to slow down some of the motorists. A lot of what we're trying to do is eventually reduce the speed limit to 40 miles per hour. As we can see, sometime in June 2024 is when that will be going up for conversation. What else have we been doing? We're going to be... We're constantly doing and conducting speed surveys in the area to ensure that the safety of the residents and even the motorists out there are, you know, being taken care of. So you can see, and the last thing is for the Los Ranchitos Home Association, there is a trail network that the city has been working with them to try to ensure that the trails out there are not necessarily cutting through on that road. And so we're... They're trying to really work together to be able to ensure the safety of the riders or of the horses to be able to ensure that they can get a wonderful ride on the trails, but at the same time, doing it safely and not always having to cut across the road. So I just want to thank staff. Thanks, Pat, for doing that. You guys have been working really well. And thank you for so much, always keeping me up to date on what's going on in my district with that area. So with that, if there's any other questions in the future, please, I'm always here for any questions or I'll get the answer if I don't have it. So thank you so much about that one. And the last thing I just wanted to bring up was the gentleman that just spoke a minute ago about the catalytic converters. I'd like to be able to talk to you at some time. We actually, with our nonprofit that I work with, we actually had our catalytic converter stolen out of our vehicle, which has completely hindered our ability to be able to move forward and getting done with our plans. So I will get with Randy and make sure that we, at least at some point in time, have a conversation to see what we can do. So thank you so much for coming forward, though. And that's it. Thank you and have a great New Year.
Thank you. Councilmember Schwanke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have one slide for this evening. If we could go ahead and put that up. So for the city of Temecula is partnering with Community Mission of Hope in honor of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. and the National Day of Service. We'll be hosting a week-long food drive with collection bins here at the Welcome Center here in City Hall as well. The food drive begins on January 15. And during the first day, staff will be promoting local volunteering opportunities as well for everyone that drops something off. That collection bin will remain in the Welcome Center until Sunday, January 21. And we'll be accepting non-perishable food items and household and hygiene items as well for Community Mission of Hope. And we really hope that folks in the community turn out and show the rest of the community how much we care about them and how much we can help them. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Calphus.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one slide here. I want to give a few highlights. The city manager's office sent out a list of highlights that the council and city staff and the city as a whole passed last year. And I limited it to three highlights going into this new year to keep us moving forward. The first one was we were able to approve the largest capital improvement project in the city of Temecula's history at over $70 million, which is the I-15 French Valley Parkway Improvement. So I was honored, as I know everyone up here is honored, to be a part of that. Next, we cut the ribbon on the Margarita Rec Center. As long as I've been here, since 1991, we've only had the one CRC, and now we will have our second one. So I know everyone is excited about that. And lastly, we were able to get term limits on the ballot. So on 2024, in November, you will see term limits for city council in Temecula on there. And our next, on February 14th, we'll be breaking ground for the auxiliary lanes on the I-15. So another exciting project in the works, and I think we're all excited for another great and productive year. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, and I have some, two. Go ahead and put the first slide up, and I'll work with it. All right, so we had a Cal Cities Division meeting up in Norco, and we had the ability to go onto this Circle D Ranch, which is basically Disney's ranch where they take the horses that are working at Disneyland and give them a break at this ranch. It's kind of like a resort for the horses. And so it was very fascinating to see how well they take care of these animals, and they literally are transporting animals from Disneyland to this ranch on a daily basis. So they work them there for three or four days, then they'll come to the ranch for a couple, three, four days, whatever it takes, and then transport them back. So it was a very, a very interesting and fun, that wagon right there. I used to go to Disneyland way back in the 1960s, and that was the very wagon, I swear, that I got to ride on. So anyways, all right, next slide. If there is a next slide. The grape drop. So for those who came New Year's Eve, they saw this massive bunch of grapes that are new. So we got rid of the ones that hang off of City Hall, and now they're much bigger and can be seen really from anywhere in Old Town. So, because we have had them on top of a, or coming down from a crane, basically right by the Christmas tree, just like you see it. And so it was, it was a really good, I wasn't there for the nine o'clock. Mayor Zach was, and yeah. And so, but I was there for the midnight drop, and I was really surprised how many people were down here. There were still thousands of people down here. So another great event that community services put together that really creates that sense of community, which I think we all appreciate and enjoy. All right, and I think that's it, with the exception of, I do want to thank my colleagues for appointing me mayor again this year. So I appreciate the confidence, and I hope to do you well. So, thank you. No. Oh, yeah, so people who are here for the hospital, we're not allowed to make comments, and there will be public hearings once that comes around. So you'll have more opportunities, and we'll be able to give you feedback at that time. But right now, we can't. So thank you. All right, now we're off to city business, which is our consent calendar. Number one, wave reading of title and text of all ordinances and resolutions included in the agenda. Number two, approve action minutes of December 12, 2023. Number three, approve list of demands. Number four, adopt ordinance number 2023-14, amending titles 16 and 17 to the Temecula Municipal Code to implement the requirements of State Senate Bill 9, second reading. Number five, receive and file citywide year-end report highlighting 2023 accomplishments. Number six, approve annual city council protocol manual for 2024 calendar year. Number seven, approve annual board committees and commissions handbook for the 2024 calendar year. Number eight, approve annual proclamation list for the 2024 calendar year. Number nine, approve annual legislative platform for the year 2024 calendar year. Number 10, approve annual citywide records retention schedule and records destruction for 2024 calendar year. Number 11, approve resolution designating certain city officials to execute applications and documents for grant funding through the Department of Homeland Security, State of California, and Riverside County. Number 12, approve consultant agreement with STC Traffic, Inc. for safety lights and signal communication upgrade citywide, PW 23-13. Number 13, approve consultant agreement with International Cybernetics Company, LPDBA IMS Infrastructure Management Services for the pavement management program update, PW 23-09. Number 14, approve First Amendment to the Utility Agreement with Southern California Edison Company for the I-15 French Valley Parkway Improvements, Phase Two, Project PW 16-01. Number 15, approve First Amendment to consultant agreement with TY Lin International for the I-15 French Valley Improvements, Phase Two, PW 16-01. Number 16, approve Third Amendment to the consultant agreement with the EXPUS Services, Inc. for the Santa Cretuitas Creek Trail, Phase Two, Margarita Undercrossing, PW 1904. Number 17, approve increase to the construction contingency authorization for the citywide concrete repairs, PW 23-14. And number 18, to approve plans and specifications and authorize solicitation of construction bids for the I-15 SR 79 South Interchange Enhanced Landscaping Project, PW 17-19. Whoa.
Yeah.
Right?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull item five. Much like this entire agenda that we're about to approve is chock full of a lot of good things. Item five is our year-end report highlighting the 2023 accomplishments. I'd just like to pull that for just a brief comment and give folks an opportunity to speak if they like.
Okay. And will you move that?
I'll move the rest of the consent.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded.
Mr. Mayor, if you'll give me just a second, and the vote screen should be showing up right now.
All right, so.
Passes unanimously.
That passes 4-0, and I will hand it off to you to.
Thank you, sir. I'm just going to read from this year-end review 2023, which is available online and is attached to this agenda. It says, "In our 34 years since incorporation, this year marked a renewed commitment to Temecula's motto of old traditions, new opportunities, and our can-do spirit, past, present, and into the future. Similarly, our collective mantra of building greatness, maintaining excellence remains a timeless management philosophy, which continues to operationalize Temecula's transparent and responsive approach to municipal government. Encapsulated into this three strategic areas, personal services, maintenance and operations, and capital projects, the annual deliverables of superior public safety, fiscal stewardship, capital improvement projects, and infrastructure delivery, community services, and organizational excellence are now commonly referred to as the Temecula Way." I want to encourage everyone, and I just want to make a comment, like, as mayor last year, we did a lot of great work in this city, and this document highlights that. So there's 200 pages. It goes through every department in the city. It is a fantastic document that I would really encourage everyone to read through, because when you really dig down in there, there is a lot of stuff, and everything kind of happens, you know, we're here every couple weeks, and we're doing these things, and you kind of forget, as you get to September, October, November, you kind of forget of all the things that you did back in January. And this was a great sort of reset for me, and I know for others as well. I just wanted to thank staff for all the hard work that you all do for the City of Temecula and the residents that choose to live here. So, thank you. And I, our city manager may want to chime in if on Zoom.
Yes, and our city manager is available via Zoom for some comments, and then I'll go ahead and take a motion to receive and file after that.
Okay.
I think, I think the mayor, councilmember Schwank, you said it great. I don't really have a whole lot to add. I appreciate you pulling in just for commentary. The staff worked incredibly hard under the council's direction and leadership. Last year, we got a lot that we're certainly proud of, and this year's going to be no different. So we're gearing up for 2024. We're excited. You're going to have a similar 200-page document this time next year as well. So thank you again, the council's support.
Thank you.
If there's no other comments, I'll move the item.
All right. Second. Please vote. I'm assuming that passes 4-0.
Councilmember Alexander, I'm assuming that's a yea?
Yes, yea.
Okay.
And that passes unanimously.
All right. So I will recess the community service district, uh, community, for the city council meeting for the community service district.
All right, and I will call to order the Temecula Community Services District meeting. Madam City Clerk, please note that we're all still here. Do we have any comments on non-agenda items?
We do not.
Okay, we'll go ahead and move to our consent calendar. We have one item, item 19, approve action minutes of December 12, 2023.
Move approval.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All right, and that passes 4-0. Do we have a director of community services report?
No slide this evening, just a quick reminder for the community that the ice rink is being dismantled as we speak, and the roads will be reopened on Friday. So I'm sure everybody will be very happy for that to happen.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
General managers report this evening?
Nothing further tonight, Mr. President.
Board of directors, anything? All right, we'll go ahead and move adjournment to our next meeting. We're adjourned.
All right, so I will call to order the successor agency to the Temecula Redevelopment Agency. Madam Secretary, please note we're all still here. We have the SARDA public comments. Do we have any?
We do not.
All right, so we'll move on to the consent calendar, which is approve action minutes of December 12, 2023. Move to approval. Moved and seconded, please vote.
Councilmember Alexander, I'm assuming, yes? Passes unanimously.
Okay, so do we have an executive director report?
No, sir, no report tonight.
Okay. Anything from the board of directors? Nope. I will adjourn the SARDA meeting and move on to the Temecula Housing, oh, no, no meeting. Temecula Finance Authority, Public Finance Authority. Madam Secretary, please note we're all still here. Any public comments?
None, sir.
Okay, so we'll move on to consent calendar, which is approve action minutes of December 12, 2023. Move to approval. It's been moved and seconded, please vote. All right, any executive director report?
Nothing further tonight.
Anything from the directors? Nope. I will adjourn and move back into the city council meeting. Our business item number 22, consider appointment of person, of person, or election to fill vacancy in Council District One pursuant to Government Code Section 3651-2.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
And that language, consider appointment of person or election, comes directly from the Government Code. So if it, if it sounds a little awkward, that's where it comes from. So just a brief staff report, and you do see a slide, a hard copy of a slide in front of you, as well as on the screen. Former city council member Curtis Brown submitted his resignation on December 13, 2024. The effective date of the resignation was January 1 of this year. According to the Government Code, you have, within 60 days of that occurrence, the council must fill the vacancy by appointment or call for a special election. The 60-day deadline is March 1, 2024. The code also states that if a vacancy occurs in the first half of a term of office and at least 130 days prior to the next general municipal election, the person appointed to fill the vacancy shall hold office until the next general municipal election, and the person elected will hold office for the unexpired balance of the term. The next general municipal election for Temecula is in November 2024. The District One contest to fill the balance of the unexpired term will be placed as a special election on the November 2024 ballot. So the city council tonight has before it three options, and those options are either to go ahead and appoint an individual, and they can do a direct appointment, and that individual would serve as a council member for District One through the certification of the November 2024 general municipal election, when the newly elected person will go ahead and serve out the balance of that two-year term. They can go ahead and appoint somebody after an application process. You can go ahead and direct staff tonight to initiate some sort of an application process, and after that, the council can go ahead and make an appointment. And again, that individual would only serve through the certification of the November 2024 general municipal election, and whoever is elected at that time will serve out the balance of the term. And then the last thing is that the council can take no action tonight. And by taking no action tonight to go ahead and appoint someone, basically, the council would continue to operate as a four-person city council through the certification of the November 2024 general municipal election, when the newly elected person would continue to serve out the balance of the unexpired term. So again, District One is going to be on the ballot regardless in November 2024, and it will be on the ballot for only a two-year term. And then in November 2026, it will again be on the ballot, and that will be for the full four-year term, and then we'll be on the, on the same four-year rotation again. So with that, I do have several public comments. I just want to make sure I answer any technical questions about the process I just explained for council first, before I start the public comments. Do any council members have any questions?
No.
Okay. Well, at this time, we will go ahead and go through the public speakers. I have several public comments. The rules for public comments are provided on the agenda itself. This is a business item. Each speaker is limited to five minutes. And again, at the conclusion of five minutes, we ask you to go ahead and monitor yourself on the time clock at the podium, and at the conclusion of five minutes, we will go ahead and call up the next speaker. The first speaker is Melanie Nieman, to be followed by Melissa Bourbonaze.
Congratulations, Mayor Stewart.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Stewart, city council members and staff. I am here to speak on item AR-24-17, addressing how to fill the city council vacancy representing District One. My name is Melanie Nieman, and I am a 20-year resident of District One. I encourage you to fill the vacancy by appointing someone to serve on the council until November 2024. At that time, qualified individuals would need to campaign for the seat. This appointment would expedite city business and provide the public time to evaluate the new city council member. In making the appointment, please consider Lynne Turley Trejo, who campaigned for the seat in 2022. She ran a very clean campaign in which she and her supporters visited each accessible home in the district, achieving second place in this race. Lynne has served on the City Planning Commission for nine years. This is the only commission that has the ability to approve items without seeking city council approval. She earned a bachelor's science degree in secondary education. She has a small business as a fitness trainer. She serves as a sign language interpreter and as a 35-year volunteer with the city. She's developed programs that are still in existence to this day. She's been endorsed by five-time mayor Michael Nagar and former city manager Sean Nelson. Lynne has demonstrated her ability to work well with others, including her colleagues on the Planning Commission, city staff, and members of the public. It is her analytical and soft skills that guide her in decision-making. Please consider appointment of Lynne Turley Trejo as the next city council member. She offers experience and fresh perspectives on such important issues with the city as public safety, traffic, and quality of life. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Melissa Bourbonaze, to be followed by Laurel Lamont.
Okay, hello. I am here also to speak on agenda item number 22. I would recommend upward community would suggest that you go with option number two, which was to both appoint and go through some type of application process. It's of our opinion that you should also include an interview process. I'm not sure if that's standard, but you should include an interview process as well because it's important that you vet this person. Whoever it is that replaces former council member Curtis Brown is hopefully going to represent the local workforce, because as we've made clear several times during city council, the local workforce isn't represented. I mentioned earlier that there's at least 18,000, 18,727 people that live here and fall in the category, according again to Erin Adams, of blue collar or service and farm workers. I know that you don't know who those people are. I know you don't know who they are, and I know you don't know where they live, what their commute looks like, and how much money they have left over after they hopefully pay all the bills. So as part- So as part of that vetting process, it's important that you find out whoever this person is that you're interviewing, what is their view on attainable homeownership? Because that's important. And even though the, the local workforce, these eighteen thousand seven hundred and twenty-seven people can't show up every other Tuesday, they still deserve, constitutionally and ethically, they still deserve representation. So I would encourage you to figure out whether, what their stance is on attainable homeownership, how much they know about affordable housing, because out of those eighteen thousand seven hundred and twenty-seven, as Mayor Stewart pointed out, December twelfth, twenty twenty-three, there's only eight hundred and four units, affordable housing units. And do we know, this is something I'm asking you, something you can also ask the applicant, do we know with those eight hundred and four units, how is it broken down? Is that moderate income, low income, very low income? Do we know? Corey came this evening, and he spoke about how he doesn't qualify. He's a grocery store worker, full-time, and he doesn't qualify. So where does, does he commute an hour and a half to move somewhere, out in the desert, and then commute here so he can serve you when you go to the local grocery store to buy your fancy cakes or whatever it is that you buy? We need to consider these people, and we need to consider them now. It's been seven years. And the other thing that you need to ask when you go through this vetting process is you need to ask whether the person who wants to represent District One, if they understand what representation looks like. And if they understand what constructive criticism looks like, because in our experience, a lot of members of city staff and city council don't understand what constructive criticism looks like. They can't differentiate between an attack and a critique, an attack or a statement of fact. Like when Laurel Lamont spoke on December twelfth and simply stated something that was told to her by Erica Russo. A restatement of fact is not an attack. And if you feel that it's an attack, maybe you shouldn't have made that statement. I challenge you to point out in any of the video recordings, because Laurel has been here for seven years. I challenge you to point out a moment when she attacked City Council. I dare you. Because we can come up, we can come up with video recordings of, of local pastors that come up here and attack. So we know what an attack looks like. And to just say what was told to Laurel, to repeat that during public comments, that's not an attack. And some people earn to the tune of three hundred and four thousand dollars, as far as a compensation package, to represent Temecula and to have to process through when somebody comes up here and has a criticism. Those are important things to consider when you interview. It's important things for a representative to understand that we all need to accept constructive criticism. And as adults making hundreds of thousands of dollars a year, some of us, we should be able to process through that as grown-ups and listen to each other, empathetic listening. And we listen, we listen, and we do our research, and we do our homework, and we relationship-build if you will allow us to. Because we seek to work with you to represent the local workforce, not just treat City Council as our own private social club. Thank you.
The next speaker is Laurel Lamont, to be followed by Lori Trask.
Okay, so Curtis is going to be replaced. We need to figure out how we're going to do that, and I hope, I'm just going to say ditto to everything Melissa just said, and I hope we seek to do an interview process for an applicant, for a representative. How many attainable homeownership options are in that district? The answer, none, because attainable homeownership is only through Habitat in Temecula, and that is in one district and one district only. So we are landlocked because of City Council decisions, because of City Council's responsibilities to zoning and planning and accounting for a constituency, a workforce, which is not thought of or accounted for. So I'm hoping that this next representative, and I'm encouraging you as Upward Community, as a grocer, as a single mom, as an advocate, a true advocate, who does the homework and shows up continuously and clearly, isn't going to go anywhere, to please seek fair and equal representation. We need somebody in those seats who's going to represent everyone and not just their agenda, because contrary to, I don't know anybody's popular belief or what I may be thought of, I'm not a Democrat, I'm not a Republican, I'm not a Libertarian, I'm an independent thinker. And I do the homework, so it's not bias. I listen to everybody, and I work with a very diverse group of people from all walks of life. Let's get some fair and equal representation in that seat. Thank you.
The next speaker is Lori Trask, to be followed by Tiffany Richter.
Good evening. I just wanted to take a second and ask that you, well, first of all, I want to thank Curtis Brown, if he's listening, for taking the position and resigning since he wasn't here, and he was always calling it or zooming in to, to vote. I appreciate that he recognized his lack of involvement in the community and that he stepped down. So I also want to ask, would you just please take no action? It's a, this is an elected position. It is, these are appointed positions, and I appreciate both. But I would ask that you would take no action and you would allow voters to vote somebody in. I recognize the first speaker was pointing out a candidate that had already run. I would encourage her to run again in November, but I would just ask you not to take action tonight. So thank you very much. I appreciate the time.
The next speaker is Tiffany Richter, to be followed by Derek Osborne.
Good evening. I am here to ask you to consider your first option, appointing a person to the open seat. And I'm here to ask for your support for Linay. You all know her very well. She did run in the November twenty twenty-two election and came in second place. Voters have already spoken for her. If there hadn't been three individuals in that race, I truly believe she would have won the race. She came, again, she came in second. I worked with her. We went door-to-door. We talked to people. People were very excited that I talked to, that she was a common sense person, that she wanted to deal with city issues, that she had the experience in Temecula, that she'd been in Temecula a long time. She raised her four boys here. She knows what Temecula used to be and how the growth has changed it. So she has a heart for both. I also hope, this is a small community, so you hear things. I hope that the decision to fill this spot won't be made with any backdoor stuff. I know you have the existing person who was the councilman before Curtis is interested in this, and he had his time. Sometimes you just can't go home. We need new ideas, and I think Linay will bring that. And I, I just hope that you would really consider her to step in and fill it. She's ready. She is more than ready. She's got the heart. She's, she's got the soul of Temecula. I just can't say enough good things about her, and, and I want to say she came in second. I've said that several times. But I spoke with people in District One, and they were excited with what she was going to bring to the table. So I think that's all I have to say. On a separate note, is there any update on the pickleball courts? That's my last thing. If you've been to Margarita, you know it's a mess. All right, thank you.
The next speaker is Derek Osborne, to be followed by Larry Slusser.
Thank you all for all your time that you take for the city. I know it's a lot, a big effort from all of you to make the city a wonderful city. I first moved here thirty years ago, when I was a younger child, and moved away after I graduated from high school, never having had a thought that I'd move back to Temecula. Lived all over the country and was raising my children and up in Oregon, where it was a really difficult place, did not really have the family values that, that I wanted. And when I came back to Temecula, I realized what a great city this is, and what a great place this is to, to raise a family and to have a connection to our community. And I'm really excited for Linay Trejo, for the opportunity for her to, to fill this seat. I really appreciate your comment around the need for voter participation, and I think that's a very valid comment, but also, as we look through, we do divide Temecula up into, into separate areas, and we need to have correct representation of the entire city. And so that also means providing someone to represent Area One, to, to allow us within that area to have someone to speak for us, and the issues are coming from our community. You all know Linay very well, and you all know that she is very accomplished. She has great connections to the community, and she really is, like what you said, the soul of, represents the soul of Temecula. She has been here since nineteen eighty-nine and really represents what makes Temecula great, and encourage you to appoint her to the seat until we have the opportunity to have an election later on this year. Thank you.
The next speaker is Larry Slusser, to be followed by Jessica. I'm sorry, I can't read the last name, but it's Jessica next.
Good evening, Mayor Stewart and members of the City Council. My name is Larry Slusser. I'm a twenty-three-year resident of Temecula. I'm grateful to have the opportunity to speak with you tonight. I also want to start off by saying thank you to Curtis Brown for his service here on the Council and for the good that he's done, and I wish him well and safety and the things that he has before him. I asked this council to fill this seat as soon as possible, and I'm not telling you anything that you don't already know, but let me just bring up a few points. There's a reason that there's five members in the council. That is to break a tie. Right now, you have four, so a tie is possible. Because the area is divided into, into areas, Area One is currently unrepresented and needs to be. The city needs the views of all five members to make a well-rounded decision. And whomever, whomever, whomever you appoint will be given a trial run, which voters can change if needed when voting next November. So it's not a, a problem that's cast for a long time. Now that I've given my reasons to fill the position, I would like to endorse Linay Turley Trejo to fill the position. I have known Linay for twenty-three years that I've lived here. Linay has lived here for thirty-five. She is a leader dedicated to providing Temecula with quality of life. There's ample evidence of Linay's improvements to our city, such as she has served on the Planning Commission for nine years, three years as chairperson. She was elected unanimously for another three-year term by the council, which says she is well-liked by her peers. While there are others who may have a resume listing city service, I would like to list some of Linay's experience and qualifications that make her stand out and above the other candidates interested in this position. She has been a leader in the community and has started such programs as Special Games, which recognizes those with special needs in the city. She's also involved with Family First Award, which recognizes those who serve families and the community. And she has been involved with Crystal Apple Award, which recognizes high school teachers for excellence in teaching. Linay is a mother and a grandmother, something the other candidates don't have. I think that her perspective is well-needed on the council. Linay has a, the wisdom of Solomon. I can see her weave through the weeds and get to the heart of a problem and make a good decision. In summary, I hope that the council makes a decision tonight and that you do fill that position. It's not forever. It's only till November, and it will give the voters and the citizens a good chance to see what, whoever you pick is like. I endorse Linay and hope that you will pick her. Thank you for listening.
The next speaker is Jessica Christopher, to be followed by Connor Rathman.
Hello, sorry about that. I've got three numb fingers on my right hand. Councilmembers, I ask that you appoint Linay Truly Trejo, who has served the city for nine years, to the District One position. Had there not been three people running, I hundred percent believe that she would have won. And the prior, Matt Ron, who had had this seat, benefited greatly from that, this position in his business. Linay doesn't have that. What she has is a true desire to serve. I mean, she's not going to make all the people in the, in the city run and go to her fitness place, you know? I really wish that you would consider, consider appointing her. It's only till November. Thank you.
The next speaker is Connor Rathman, to be followed by our last speaker, Len Pennick.
Good evening, council members. Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, thank you for your time tonight. I want to start by thanking Councilman Brown for his service, and it sounds like he's continuing to serve elsewhere. So I definitely appreciate that. I am a resident of District One, and I think it is very important that that position is filled quickly. And for example, Councilmember Alexander was talking about receiving an email from our constituent. If this position is held open until the certification, that's effectively just under a year. I believe filling it and having someone there to represent us would be greatly helpful and something that's important to the people of that community. As far as recommendations, this is a service that someone is going to do until the election, until they can face the voters. And someone who is extremely service-minded is Linay Truly Trejo, and I'd like to endorse her for the reasons that many of others have already stated. In addition to her heart for service and the fact that she's already been doing it for ten years on the Planning Commission. Thank you very much for your time. Have a good evening.
And the last speaker is Len Pennick.
Sorry. Hello, Happy New Year. And I too am here to encourage the council to appoint Linay Truly Trejo this evening to the vacated District One City Council position due to the resignation of Curtis Brown. Linay would be a fantastic replacement and should rightly be appointed, as she came in second to Mr. Brown in the previous election. And it's obviously been stated that there were three people running, and we all wholeheartedly believe that. Had there been two, that Linay would be holding that seat right now. Linay has diligently served the city and people of Temecula for thirty-five years. She's raised her family here and is firmly entrenched in the city. She headed up the Special Games, Crystal Apple Awards for the teachers of TVUSD, and was a member of the former, former Certified Emergency Response Team. As Planning Commissioner, she has worked to keep Old Town safe and family-friendly. She supports police, fire, and the homeless outreach team. I think Linay has a proven track record and of being easy to work with and would bring not only a positive attitude, but would add a little more balance to the male-heavy council. So just a plug in there for that. And I too, I, I walked those homes with just various people with Linay and just saw her diligently try to reach out to that community and to get that support. And I think she really has it, and I just really would ask that, it's a short term. I think the voters already want, you know, voted and want that representation. And it's, it's till November, and then she can prove herself in that seat and then be reelected. I could see that happening. And I just would really encourage you guys to make the right decision tonight. And I echo what Mrs. Richter said. Mr. Ron has had his time on here, and he's moved on to bigger and better things. And it's time for Linay to take that seat and to serve alongside with you, as she has diligently done in the past. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Mayor, that concludes all public comments on this particular item. Now I would go ahead and encourage you to facilitate discussion with your colleagues and then eventual direction to staff.
All right, so let's go ahead and do that. Let's kind of give us, one by one, our thoughts and where we want to, where we want to go. So let's count, start with Councilmember Schwenk.
Okay, happy to, Mr. Mayor. Okay, so I'm just going to go down the list and kind of give you my thoughts. And, you know, the hope is for me that we can sort of build know, the hope is for me that we can sort of build some consensus here. And I actually, I'm pretty hopeful that we will be able to do so. I wouldn't feel comfortable just appointing someone tonight without an application process. I think that's an important part of anything public-facing, is we should have an application process where we can hear from, from folks. When Supervisor Washington was, then Councilmember Washington was appointed to fill the seat over at the Supervisors, that process was transparent. And I would, I would think that that's the best way to do it. You get to go out to the community, you let everybody know, this is what's, what's happening. We get to hear from everyone. I initially had, you know, quote-unquote, thrown my hat in the ring for that seat and ended up pulling it because I felt like if, if I wanted to sit here, I wanted to earn it. And I wanted to be voted in by the voters, a majority of the voters in, in a district. So that's sort of a little bit of my thought process on that. So I wouldn't, wouldn't want us to appoint someone tonight, although I think if anyone was watching, they might think this was like a Laine retirement ceremony or something. There's a lot of conversation about that. And, you know, much like Laine and other folks in our city, we have a lot of wonderful people in the city. So we're not, we can't deny that. There are a lot of wonderful people in the community. My heart is, is, is stuck a little bit. We talk about, you know, not doing anything, so that leaves us with the possibility of a tie. And, and that could be problematic for some items that we bring forward, right? If we, if I was to bring something forward and it, it died 2-2, it just wouldn't pass. And I don't think that's the worst thing that could happen, right? So that, that's something that I've been thinking about. Representation is another issue. I routinely field emails from all five council districts. And depending on, you know, who the council member is for that district, or maybe I don't even know, I might reply or I might, you know, forward it to that council member. But I'm not a legal representation for anyone other than District Five. And so I have a problem, you know, saying like, we can collectively work together to handle some of the issues that folks will bring forward, whether it's District One or District Two, or District Three, Four, or Five. And we can collectively say, the city used to be, you know, general election and we all used to pitch in and we all used to make everything great. We'll continue to do that, but none of us will be a representation for District One. So, so I'm also weighing that. My biggest issue and where I'm leaning is I think that the voters need to vote for who sits in that seat. I just, I think that's how this system works. I don't live in District One and while I recognize I have the legal authority to appoint someone, I'm struggling with that. Appointing someone to a district with thousands of people that I don't know. And I have friends that live in District One. I know folks that live down there. But we're talking about a legal parameter around what it means to appoint someone. So that's where I'm struggling, just with how is District One going to have representation for the balance of 2024, coupled with, I don't believe we're qualified, we're not voters in District, District One. I'm not a voter in District One. And, and I know you can go out and campaign and say the, you know, what if, what if? But the reality is, is someone got elected, they resigned, now we're in a position of what do we do? I think we let it go to the voters, honestly. We did that a couple of years ago, Mayor Stewart, with, with your seat. It was a shorter time, so, but it was a, I went back and watched the video. It was about a 10-second conversation. Nope. And I said, I think we let the voters decide. And Councilmember Nigar agreed, everyone else agreed, and, and we did. And we let the voters decide. And you're back. Thankfully, you're back, right? So that's where I'm leaning. I think we let the voters decide.
All right. Councilmember Calvis, or not Councilmember, Mayor Pro Tem.
I would agree with a lot of issues that you brought up, Councilmember Schwank. Well, first I want to thank Councilmember Brown. I think we all know how hard it is to run a campaign and get in the seat, so I can only imagine how difficult it was for him to make the decision to resign. But like one of the public speakers said, I think he realized that he wasn't able to devote enough time to the city of Temecula and he made that difficult decision to step down. But I know that he will be missed and we thank him for his time here. I'm also struggling with this too. I think, I'm leaning more towards number two, which would be appoint after an application process. I think that we should field the applicants to see who would be interested in the council seat for District One. I think, like you said, Councilmember Schwank, representation matters. But I also see your point where it's, it's difficult, like, are we qualified to select the individual that should sit in that seat versus getting elected in? And I see it both ways. For me personally, right now, I'm leaning again towards the appointment after the application process. I think appointing someone just straight off the gate here tonight would, wouldn't give equal opportunity to those in District One that are looking to fill that seat. But it's a difficult decision and, yeah, I'm just leaning towards number two right now, which would be appoint after application process.
All right. Councilmember Jessica Alexander.
Well, thank you for that. I want to say it's been a, some good conversations with residents over the last couple, couple of weeks that I've called up and made their statement. I can't say that all of them realistically were from that district. And so as a councilmember, I have to definitely agree, I think where Councilmember Schwank is talking about is the fact that I don't either want to speak for the voters and that's why we do have an election process in November. And so for me, I think if I was to pick right now, we're kind of talking about what would we do? I think the number one thing for me would to take no action at this point in time and just wait and allow the voters to choose who they want to have as a representation in November.
All right. Well, I, I was actually a resident of District One for 17 years and I owned property there just till three years ago. So I'm very familiar with District One. I voted in District One. So as far as not being represented, I, I know we all field questions and we never ask the citizen, what district do you live in? I mean, we will respond as if they live in our district. I mean, I, I know I never do, unless staff somehow sorts it out and says, oh, they're in District Three, give it to, you know, Jessica or, you know, whoever. So I guess you're three. So it's, for me, I, I don't feel the pressure as far as lack of representation because I believe we all represent the entire city. Now legally, you're right, we, we are elected by our districts. However, I was elected by the entire city in 2016. So I was literally elected by District One too. So as far as I'm concerned, District One is my child too. I mean, it's, it's part of who I am as a city councilman. So I am also leaning to let the voter decide. I, I have issues with appointments. I don't think that is the best way to give the citizen their due. And so I would tend, I, I would lean towards, let's just leave it vacant and let the citizens decide in November. So that being said, it sounds like we have a consensus with three of us going that route and one going for an appointment. So do we need, we need an actual vote, do we not?
Yes, a motion.
Yes.
Yes, we would, we'd still need a motion. And staff, we will say that if, if, you know, the, the city manager and his entire executive team serve the entire city and we want to make sure that even on, like, as we update the webpages and everything else, we will put in specified information to make sure for District One residents specifically, although it may say vacant, we will add some information underneath there indicating how they can still communicate with all the balance of the electeds, as well as report any of their concerns to any of our departments. And we encourage the community and/or the council, anybody out there, if there's other ways that we can more effectively, efficiently communicate that information so that District One feels that representation and make sure, in the interim, and make sure that their needs are being met, and we would certainly receive all of that feedback and respond accordingly. And with that, Mr. Mayor, we would need a motion.
Okay, so I'll go ahead and move that we, that we do. Number three, take no action. And I just want to note that I want to thank Madam City Clerk for bringing that up because that was something we were going to talk about, is like to make sure that when folks go to the website, they know that, where they can get help for the issues that they're dealing with in their district. But I'll motion that we take no action on this item.
Go ahead, a second.
Second.
All right. It's been moved to second. Please vote.
Mr. Mayor, that passes 3-1.
All right. Thank you. All right, so we're off to item number 23, consider appointments to the City Council Committees for calendar year 2024.
Mr. Mayor, this is also my item.
Right.
And this is an annual item. We do not have any public speakers on this particular item. Every year, we ask the City Council to go ahead and go through the City Council Subcommittee Assignment List and go ahead and provide the standing committee representatives, the representative assignments for external communities, as well as our ad hoc representatives. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I would just ask that you go ahead and facilitate a line-by-line review of this particular item. We will take copious notes and then we will go ahead and ask for one motion at the end of the review.
All right. So let's start with item, or line number one, which I'm sure it's Councilmember Schwank. Since he is our president, it only makes sense that he should be our.
Yeah. I also, I mean, I know we're kind of getting ahead, but I also don't mind staying on Ready. So if someone else wanted to do TCD, I don't have a problem with that either.
Okay. So let's go to Old Town Local Review Board, which is a new one.
Mr. Mayor, I'm not clear on which is.
Oh, Schwank is Community Services.
So is he also staying on Ready as well?
We haven't gotten there yet, so I'm going to go line by line, just to, just to keep it square.
Okay, well, hold on a second.
You can do two, can't you?
Yeah, we're, someone's going to have to do two.
Right, exactly.
I was going to suggest that since Old Town Local Advisory Committee is in District Five and I'm on the Old Town Steering Committee, that I serve on the Old Town Local Advisory Committee.
That would put you on three though.
Well, I know, that's why I'm saying I'd rather stay off Community Services for now.
Oh, okay.
Well, since I'm Vice, how about I pick that up?
Okay.
Okay, cool. That works out.
Okay, so I want to be clear. For Community Services Commission, we have Councilmember Alexander.
Yep.
And for Old Town Local Advisory Committee, we have Councilmember Schwank. And on Ready, we have Councilmember Schwank.
Yes.
Okay.
And Planning Commission, you want to stay, Mr. Calvis?
I can stay or I can swap to the Traffic Safety Commission.
I would actually, I would actually like to do Traffic Safety Commission because I want to follow the e-bike.
I will gladly stand.
Scenario, so, so put me on that.
So for Community Liaisons, Mr. Mayor, we now have, for Community Services Commission, we have Councilmember Alexander. For Old Town Local Advisory Committee, we have Councilmember Schwank. For Planning Commission, we have Mayor Pro Tem Calvis. For Traffic Safety Commission, we have you, Mr. Mayor. And then for Ready, we have Councilmember Schwank.
Yep. All right. So Standing Committees, two members. These are publicly noticed meetings, so there's a, oh, no, it's just two members. So Arts and Culture, we got Schwank and nobody else. So does anybody want to do Arts and Culture with Councilmember Schwank?
I can jump on that one, Schwank.
Okay. All right. City Sustainability, it's Calvis and Stewart. Are we good?
Yep.
All right. I'm good. E-Government, Temecula Outreach Subcommittee, Alexander, Schwank.
I'm good with that.
Good.
Still good? Economic Development Subcommittee, Calvis, Stewart. I'm good. You're good? Old Town Steering Committee is Schwank.
I'd like to jump on that since I had done that before.
So Alexander. Financial, Finance Subcommittee, Stewart and Calvis. Are you good?
Good.
All right, I'm good. In-Fill Land Use Project Review Subcommittee, Schwank and Stewart.
Yep.
Yep, okay. Infrastructure Beautification Subcommittee, Alexander and Stewart. I'm good.
I'm good.
Okay. Joints, and by the way, if, if you want on something, just let me know because, just because we're good doesn't mean we'll, we'll go around. Joint City Council, TVUSD, Schwank and?
I can jump on that.
Alexander, okay. Military Subcommittee, Alexander and Schwank.
I'm good.
Good.
Okay. I, move I-15 through Temecula Valley, Stewart and?
I'll jump on that if no one else wants to.
Sure.
All yours.
All right. Parks and Rec Community Services Subcommittee, Stewart and Schwank. I could step off if somebody wanted to.
I'll jump on that since I'm on the Community Services Commission.
Yeah, exactly. That makes more sense. Public Works Subcommittee, Alexander and, I wouldn't mind being on that.
Go for it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Surplus Land Act, it's Calvis and Stewart. I'm good.
Good.
Good. These are representative assignments, meet in person as needed, external organizations. So these are basically regional things we're involved in. Animal Shelter Liaison, I could definitely step off if anybody wants that.
I can hop on that one.
Okay.
Cool.
League of Cities, California Cities, it was Schwank and Stewart. This is usually the mayor and Mayor Pro Tem, so in this case it would be me and Mayor Pro Tem Calvis.
Yeah, have at it.
League of Cities, same thing. It's usually mayor and Mayor Pro Tem.
Yep.
So.
Go for it.
I would really like to be on the Patranga Tribal Representative, just because I'm mayor and I, I kind of feel that the mayor should have that kind of representation with the tribe, so I would like to be on that.
I'd, I'd also like to do that and.
Can we have two people?
Yeah, rather than arm wrestle you for it, let's just do two.
Let's do that.
I would like to see the arm wrestle.
Yeah, right?
Oh, he'd lose totally.
I'm pretty good.
Oh, well, okay. Maybe they will see.
Right, right. Ranch of California Water District Liaison, that was me.
I'll jump on that.
You want to do that?
That'll be something new, yeah.
Okay.
And I can stay as alternate, that's why.
Okay. Southwest Riverside County Energy Authority, JPA, which is that even valid anymore? Is that?
It is, yeah.
It is a valid agency. They might not meet very often, but we still need representatives.
All right, well.
I'll stay on.
Okay. I'll stay on it too. Sister City Liaison.
I know you want that, Stu.
I do, I do.
I would, let's do two again because I'd really like to be a part of that. And we both attended when the delegation came, so I'd like to be on that as well.
Okay. All right. So the next set is representative assignments. These are in-person, external organizations. These require a lot of time, so if, if it's something that you can't commit the time to, it's really not a good fit. So WR, Western Riverside Conservation Authority, RCA, it's me with alternate Alexander.
I wouldn't mind jumping on WR Cog if you're, if you're willing to step off.
Well, here's, here's the thing. WR Cog and I think it's RCA-C.
The next one.
They meet back-to-back.
Back-to-back. So you'd have to take them both.
Yeah, I can, I mean, I can do that if you want to do, if you want to stay doing it, stay doing it.
Okay.
If you don't, I'll do it and then.
If you want to do it, I'll alternate.
Okay, let's do that.
Okay. I'm cool with it.
So, Mr. Mayor, just for clarification.
Yeah.
For Western Riverside County Regional Conservation Authority, RCA, that meets monthly on Monday at 12:30 and then it's WR Cog Executive Committee that meets Monday at 2:00 PM. So what you are saying is that the primary will be Schwank on both of those and the alternate will be Stewart on both of those?
Yeah, okay, so I might have an issue already.
Yes.
Yeah, because I just got put on the executive committee.
Are you on the executive committee? All right, well, then you got to do it because that's the way that works.
And there's a lot of issues we need to, yeah, we need to pound out.
So just, I can serve as alternate unless Councilmember Alexander. So just, I can serve as alternate unless Councilmember Alexander wants to be alternate.
No, she's good, so, yeah.
So on both of those, instead, I will have the mayor as the primary and Councilmember Schwank as the alternate.
Perfect.
Sounds good.
RCTC, are you good with being an alternate, too, on that?
Yeah, I can be alternate on RCTC.
Yeah. Are you cool with that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, so let's just, yeah, make, make that.
So you, you can stay primary on RCTC as well?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And then RTA.
Yeah.
Definitely you still want that.
Absolutely.
Does anybody want to be an alternate?
I'll do it, that's fine.
Okay.
So that one was going to be the RTA.
Yeah.
See?
Yes.
Perfect.
Yes.
Did we do the RCHCA?
Yes.
Yeah, it's, it's the back, second one from WR cog.
I'm sorry, so I actually don't have RCHCA.
That's what I was saying.
So it's because, it's because WR cog is on the next page, and so for RCHCA, that is Thursday at 11:30, the third Thursday. So on that one, right now, we have the mayor, and the alternate is Councilmember Alexander.
Did you meet four times last year with that one?
Yes, we did. Why do you want to do it?
I want to do it, but that, because that was the least time commitment, and time is my issue, so I like to hop on one of those, but.
Okay, I mean, I'd be happy to hand that off to you.
How about I be your alternate?
Okay.
If Councilwoman Alexander's okay with that?
Oh, yeah, sorry, I'm like reading this.
Yeah, yeah.
Go for it.
Okay.
Spread the wealth.
So, so.
Stewart, Calphus.
Got it. So I just want to, since there was a lot of conversation on this one, for, for RCA, I have Stewart and Schwank.
Yeah.
For RCHCA, I have Stewart and Calphus.
Yep.
For RCTC, I have Stewart and Schwank. For RTA, I have Schwank and Alexander, and for WR cog, I have Stewart and Schwank.
Yes. Does that work? Okay. Okay, ADHOC Committees. Alter Property ADHOC Subcommittee, it's me and anybody else.
I'll do it.
Okay.
Unless somebody else wants it, but it's in D5, so.
It, it's going to be a little exciting here in the next year, because they should be under construction.
Yep.
Butterfield, Temecula Parkway Properties ADHOC Subcommittee.
I'll stay on that, since that's our district.
Same.
Okay. Community Services Funding ADHOC Subcommittee, Schwank and Stewart. I could step off for?
I would like to be on that one.
Yeah, I'd like to stay.
Okay. Diaz Property ADHOC Committee, Calphus, Schwank.
Mr. Mayor, we actually need County Center Drive Development ADHOC Subcommittee. That's a new one.
Oh, I, I saw it red, I thought it was, okay, County Center Drive.
That's also in District Five, I'll jump on that.
Okay.
I'll jump on that as well with you.
Okay. Diaz Property ADHOC, Calphus, Schwank, we're good?
I'm good.
Good.
Okay. Franchise Agreements ADHOC Subcommittee, it's brand new, so.
Yeah, this is related to trash collection, CRNR.
I would like to be on that if I could. Yeah.
I'll be, I'll be on that, too.
Okay, all right.
Talk about trash.
Right. Trash talkers.
I don't know, it's, it's important work.
Yeah, absolutely. French Valley Parkway Interchange ADHOC Subcommittee, Stewart and?
I'd like to jump on that one.
Okay.
Is that okay with the council?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. General Plan Update ADHOC Subcommittee, Alexander, Stewart. Are we good, or?
I'm good, but, yeah, I'm fine with it.
Okay.
General Plan Update, yes, yes, I was thinking of a different one.
Okay, Higher Education ADHOC Subcommittee, Calphus, Schwank. You good?
I would like to stay on that, yes.
Yeah, how does that mesh with the Southwest Delected Collaborative Subcommittee, which is like taxed with this sort of the same conversation?
So that particular collaborative task force, the higher ed was their focus for 2023, according to their last correspondence, and in 2024, it's going to be more focused on transportation and transit, which is why we added it to the Move I-15.
Okay, got it.
All right, so.
I mean, I'm, I'm good on it.
Okay. Calphus and Schwank. Hospital ADHOC Subcommittee, Schwank.
I would like to be on that one, if that's okay.
All right. Calphus. Human Services ADHOC Subcommittee, Calphus and Alexander.
I'm good.
Yep.
Good? Maryetta Creek Project ADHOC Subcommittee, Schwank and Stewart.
I'm good.
I'm good. Old Town Civic Center ADHOC Subcommittee, Alexander and Stewart.
I'm okay on that one.
I'm okay, too.
I'm good with me.
Police Base Operations, Stewart and Schwank, and I'd like to keep it that way.
Yeah, we got work to do.
We're like in the middle of something, so. Promenade in Temecula ADHOC, ADHOC Subcommittee, Stewart and Alexander.
I'm good.
I'm good. Public Recognitions ADHOC Subcommittee, Alexander and Stewart.
So I think that one, if we, if I remember correctly, we were picking the most senior and the most junior person to be on that one.
Correct, yes.
So that would be you and?
Calphus.
Calphus, yes.
I would love to be on that one.
Okay. Public Safety ADHOC Committee, Alexander, Calphus.
I'm good.
I would like to stay, yes.
Yeah, I know you both want to stay. I'd like to jump on that. We don't have to arm wrestle for it, but.
Does anybody?
If, if you don't want to jump off, I totally understand, but if you do.
I'd be going to the gym.
I got another arm wrestle going down.
All right, I'm taking that as a no. Brendan, Mayor Protam Calphus is like not looking, he's like, I'm not looking.
I can hop off, you can hop off.
No, 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 that's fine. I don't want to, I don't want to force anyone off, I just wanted to express interest in, in being a part of that Subcommittee.
Okay. So that'll remain the same, then. Ropaw Ranch, AKA Summer Spend ADHOC Subcommittee, Calphus and Schwank.
Yeah, I'm good on that.
Good.
Okay. Sarafina Property ADHOC Subcommittee, where is the Sarafina property?
It's, it's in your district, it's District Four.
It's off Nicholas Road.
Nicholas Road, going up towards Muriel Hot Springs.
Yeah, Joseph and Nicholas, so Winchester, get on Nicholas going east. And it's before you get to where they're extending Nicholas.
Oh, okay. Great question.
Okay. Yep, since it's in my district, I'm going to stay on that. Anybody else want on it?
I'm fine staying on it, that's fine.
Service Level Assessment ADHOC Subcommittee, Schwank and Stewart.
I'll stay.
I'm good. Strategic Fiscal Planning ADHOC Subcommittee, Schwank and Stewart.
I want to stay on that.
I would like to hop on it.
All right.
Anyone's willing to?
I'll let you.
All right.
Supportive Housing Services ADHOC Subcommittee.
I would also like to hop on that one, if anyone is willing to.
I'm going to stay on that for sure.